We'll need to order, we'll start the pledge allegiance to the state if you're able.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call her roll call, starting on my right.
Councilperson Josh Aaron.
Councilperson Brent Meyer.
Mayor Jimmy John King, councilperson Craig Olson.
Councilperson Gerald Johnson.
Approval of tonight's agenda, anything else need to go on your staff?
Anything from our end?
Anybody up here want anything or need anything? Looking for approval, have a motion, do we have a second?
Okay.
No in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of March 23rd.
I'll make the motion approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, that carries, finance and budget. You have the accounts payable and the additional accounts payable listing, if you have any questions, direct them to Finance Director Carla.
I'll make the motion approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that'll take us into motions, general business. First item under general business tonight will be Schuman's Rolling Ridge Forest subdivision. Approval of GDP, lot split and pre-plat. Takes us to second, committee.
This one is the one where Mark gives a speech, right?
No, Mark won't.
I thought Mark was engineer, he probably wants to.
Aren't you gonna give a speech, Mark?
Not tonight. Everybody's hungry.
Mark Schuman has submitted a GDP revision, preliminary plat, lot split request for the next phase of his development. Alex, the engineer on this project, will be in attendance to walk you through each step of the subdivision. City engineer Obernolte has submitted her review for compliance as per city ordinances and Homestead County also requested traffic information. The lot split will be to separate outlot A, the pond, and outlot B, outlot B, the park, from the housing portion of the property. These two parcels will be needed to the city in the future. A development agreement, a letter of credit on this project will be submitted prior to commencement of the construction starting. Planning Commission held a public hearing on April 6th and they are recommending approval of all three requests, subject to the city engineer's review. Alex, take it away.
All right, let's turn up the GDP amendment, so try to copy the original GDP, but the major changes from the GDP, the original GDP, there originally was a road that they were gonna run all the way out to Highway 63, in conversations with the city engineer and the city itself, they have talked with the state and DOT, and the DOT has no interest in seeking another access to Highway 63 at that point. So we took that out. The second one would be the right-of-way width change that was here, so in the original, or in the future land use plan, this road was supposed to run up and be a major collector for the rest of the neighborhood to the north, however, there are some geographic features that are gonna make that relatively expensive. The city's dependency on the private development to fund that, it's unlikely that this road will continue that far and that the primary usage will be on Second Avenue. So we reduced the right-of-way to 66 feet, it is now just a local street. And the last change is the old rail bed along here, we dedicated that as future public space. Any questions on the GDP?
Any questions? Hawaii's got a little future space or anything to put there?
It's the old rail bed, I think it's 100 feet wide. I have to verify that though.
You've seen this old.
Yeah, I've seen it. Anything else? Move to the preliminary plat. So this is the next phase of Schuman's Rolling Ridge. We have 20 lots, single-family homes, we have two proposed streets and an extension of Mark's lane. All public infrastructure, we do have a drainage swale down the backs of these that we're extending to a box culvert, and then drainage will then be routed around, and then to the old rail, the old rail bridge here where it eventually ends up into the river. All the storm water from the road will go through the storm sewer system and be treated at our pond. We don't need any modifications to the pond at this time, it was redesigned for this development. Any questions on the preliminary plat? Okay. Put over to the grading plans, you guys can see. We did highlight the planning commission meeting, this yellow piece, this was, this is the lot split that we are also asking for you guys to approve, so the lot split does not contain the outlots because the splitting of this property allows us to keep this, these two outlots that are going to be needed to the city lean free, and the lean will then exist only on the yellow highlighted space. So it shows the drainage going all the way around, and then all of the impervious area will then be treated and sent to the storm sewer system to the pond. Questions on grading plan?
Jenna, everything looks good to the city engineer?
Yep, there were some comments that have already been submitted back to them, and as soon as those are taken care of, everything looks good.
Mel?
Um, we've all, um, ours also dedicated some area for, so that neighborhood will have its own little park there. From the road, right away eventually, we become part of our trail system, out to the park.
So this is the pocket park space. Moving rates to modify the pond in future, as we will need to increase the size for the rest of the development.
They get the room to do that down there too Jenna? The pond?
They have a room.
Make it bigger?
They do have the space in the outlot.
All right, any other questions for Alex, or Jenna? Or Mark? If not, they're looking for approval of the revised GDP?
I'll make the motion approve.
Do we have a second?
So, for a second, sorry.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval, oh, excuse me, aye, anyone aye? No, I guess not, it was five, oh, okay. Approval of the lot split, so, do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. And approval of the preliminary plat?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, that carries. Mark, you burning daylight, you get out there and start doing a little dirt work, you have before dark.
I borrow your shovel, but I know you don't even own one.
I wore it out. Hey, Mark, thank you for continuing on.
Well, thank you guys, thank all of you, thank everybody that helped on this.
We appreciate it. All right, that'll take us to item B, street vacation. Are there any streets going on vacation?
See ya.
You can stay, Mark, if you like. During the 2019 CIP project, the city worked with three abiding property owners and initiated vacating a portion of Third Avenue Southeast. We have the survey, the certificate of survey in your packet. This stub street was not used by the general public, it only has access on the abiding property. As part of the CIP project, the city agreed to blacktop a portion of this area for easy access. A public hearing was held on April 6th, 2021, before the Planning Zoning Commission, and they are recommending approval. So our action tonight's going to be approve the Resolution 2021-Resolution Vacating a Portion of Third Avenue Southeast. Now, if you look through your bag, is there any questions on this, what it is or what they did?
So that portion got paved during the CIP.
Well, down to a bucket.
Right, right on there. So, by vague, what does that mean, that we don't have to deal with that?
No, we're gonna give it to him and to him.
Right, so as far as any story move or anything, that's their problem, okay.
This rule comes.
Yeah, it occurs, all right.
Then they took here, but already this winter too.
What you see in the aerial is not what's paved today.
You know, I know, that's the old picture and I'm familiar with the area, I just wasn't sure somehow or another, maybe a lunge or moves or anything.
And once we vacate this, do the abiding owners, it's their problem, the maintenance of it, the cleaning of it, the rest of it. Thanks, Wayne. Any other questions? PZ found it good?
Yeah.
Okay. So then we're looking for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-Resolution Vacating a Portion of Third Avenue Southeast.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That'll take us on to the next item, approval of lot split indeed from city to the Dairy Queen. The city has been working with Ryan and Ashley Mosh, owners of the Dairy Queen, and needing them parcel A is shown on a certificate of survey. In past years, this parcel was leased by former DT owners to use for a miniature golf and seating area. As you can see on the survey, parcel A shows a five-foot pedestrian trailer the city added this past year. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on April 6th and are recommending approval of this lot split. The action requested will be approval of the lot split, excuse me, split, and authorize city administrator Schimmel to continue with the process of deeding this parcel over to them. Questions? We've already done a real nice job of approving how it is.
Yeah, looks good.
Anything for administrator Schimmel or anyone? All right, now what we're looking for is a motion to authorize this lot split and authorize city administration.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That'll take us on to D. Comprehensive Plan, approval of contract with SEH Incorporated. As per our instructions at the recent workshop, we've brought forward a proposal from SEH to update our comprehensive plan. As presented at the workshop, the comprehensive planning process includes vision and engagement, land use planning and mapping, and implementation recommendations. This process will take approximately 15 to 18 months to complete. The SEH consulting team includes Marie Grace, project manager, Nate Day, transportation lane use planner, and Dylan Constant, comprehensive planner. They will also be working very closely with our cedar reps, Joya Stetson and Lexi Williams. Now, the contract is not to exceed 55,800, which will be invoiced monthly for services rendered. SEH staff will invoice on a hourly basis, costs, miles, reproductions, etc., will be billed as actual expense. The dash is to complete this proposal. The council action tonight will be to enter into the contract with SEH for the consulting and updating the comprehensive plan. And, uh, about every 10 years we do this, isn't that correct?
Yep, Sterfield's history has reflected that.
Motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, and I'd also like to thank SEH for working with our cedar reps, letting them do some of this work, help build the place a little bit. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That'll take us on to E, 2021 Pool Season, Approval of Lifeguards and Concession Workers. The city has advertised for lifeguards, concession workers for the 2021 season. As per past practice, our pool director hires guards, instructs concession workers from previous years pending favorable job performance. Additional applicants have been interviewed by Director Jacob Flynn. Now, I'm not gonna list them all off to require a list of names, but the council action requested is to approve submitted, approve the submitted, and to also give Director Flynn approval to hire additional guards, workers as needed. Any questions or discussion?
No, I'll make a motion aside. I'll make a motion to approve this.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That'll take us to Adult Softball and Bear Cave Concessions. Approval of Director, Director Uptograph and. Due to the resignation of Kevin and Anita Height from softball director in concessions, the city has brainstormed ideas on how to move forward with this. Todd Uptograph approached the city as a past umpire and stated he'd be willing to take on the duties of director. Due to his knowledge of the program and scheduling of umpires, we feel he will be a good fit. Schimmel also reached out to SYAA to see if they would be interested in running the concessions, and currently has city attorney Leth working on lease agreement. Okay, so there's two actions, to authorize Todd Uptograph as softball director and authorize approval of lease with SYAA for the operation of concessions. Now, I guess the only question I got, when you talk about the lease, we're gonna, they're gonna pay us so much, are we?
It's just minimal, what they've agreed to do, it's like a dollar lease, but, um, to show something. But then what they've agreed to do, which they have done in the past, when they do have profits build up, they make donations to improvements either on the soccer fields or for chalking or, in this case, they'll help now probably with some ball field.
I said, Bill, in the past, there's tournaments in town, because a lot of these teams that won in tournaments, I guess they said they couldn't make much money or because of the way the concessions was set up, is it still gonna be the same or are we making it a little bit easier to have, to bring more softball teams and baseball teams in town than at all tournaments?
We've given up, if you. Flexibility. Yeah, that's SYAA.
Okay.
Uh, since you have inventories involved, the food, snacks, things, that's where it was always tricky, is one group have to clean all their stuff out, so the next group comes in, so we've told the SYA people, you can work out any arrangements you want, that'll either help them, or if they wanna pull their stuff, a tournament could have.
I mean, it'd just be nice, because some of these softball tournaments and baseball tournaments get pretty big, it'd be nice to bring a bunch of teams to town, have, you have a great complex to use it, utilize it.
So this will be kind of a trial run here, different, but we've given them flexibility to work that out.
Hopefully some softball teams, bring it forward then. Okay?
All right, council action requested to approve Todd Uptograph as softball director, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Name, that is approved. Second motion is to authorize approval of a lease with SYAA for the operation of concessions. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That takes us out of motions and general business, takes us into mayor's staff and assault reports. Mayor's report tonight, sympathy are sent to the families of Joey Johnson, Tim Ryan, Laura Zink, Eugene Clausen, Kenny Huntsley, Randy Reinhardt, and Ari Schmidt. Sterfield Star is now taking resi- registrations for the citywide garage sale, and that will be held on May 6th through the 8th, always a big time in town when that goes on. And, why don't you start the spring cleaning, get ready for the citywide cleanup days, May 15th and 19th, that's will be the citywide cleanup again out there.
Saturday and Wednesday, I follow.
Is there any change, so the lines aren't three miles long, or is there anything we can do different or not?
Nah.
You know, I'm, I'm just curious.
Most early now, coming down second, and then when it's extended, we actually have last, um, on County Road 6. That way they can stay close to the shoulder and, um, traffic can still move, and then we don't bother traffic on 63.
There actually, when I got the line last year, I was lined up clear down around 6 and 6, but it wasn't that long, I mean, it really wasn't that long, I mean, a week, I thought it'd be the rest of the day, but I suppose it's not working as I.
Yeah, it's overwhelming when you see it, but the line actually moves, moves pretty good.
So, that's about all I got on the report, Bill, city administrator's report?
Report's pretty sharp, um, biggest item is our CIP project started, um, over the neighborhoods behind the hardware store, Gray Funeral Home, Central School, and the good news is, um, uh, we're getting almost a month head start, uh, from last year, and, uh, we'll keep that communication system going, that's worked out really well, uh, with emails and updates, uh, for the residents and the businesses, and then we've told the contractor that since this area is tied in with a lot of business, they've gotta be very cognizant about access, uh, from one side or the other, or allowing supplies to come in, customers come in, inventory to come in, things like that, and Elkar's been great to work with, and they've pledged their help to do that, so we expect everything to hopefully go well.
How was the online swimming lesson?
Um, we had a glitch, we didn't have the glitch, the program had a glitch, uh, yesterday. She says, she must've filled it 100 some.
That iPhone didn't stop, it was non-stop.
It was non-stop, but she was really good with everybody, um, what happened is the program people did get in touch with us, um, I think they got it pretty well.
They, within about an hour, it kinda got corrected, and there was, really wasn't any issues, and do you remember what the number was this morning, was it?
700 something?
Around 700. Yeah, we got 700 people, and then today, today the phone rang a few times to, to have people, to help people walk through, but I mean, really, people were really great about it, if they had anybody that needed to change anything, were able to change things, it seems like it, it went very, very well.
Good deal.
Yeah, Laurel said she might have one or two people say, oh, I wish it was the old system, 'cause my husband didn't know how to do the online stuff, but most of the people that commented said they were appreciative for the online service, 'cause they could do it from the comfort of their home, um, instead of standing in line like they've had to do for, um, a good stretch, so.
So far so good. So you had over 700, 700?
Yeah, 750, did she say, close to?
Yeah.
Yeah, big normal, just out of curiosity.
I don't know.
I was just curious.
For the first, I mean, for the first day's signup, it seems like it went very, I mean, it went very well, and then like I said, there are still people signing up today and going through it, and then you know, there's people that all of a sudden realize, so it seems like people are very excited about the pullback open and have the availability.
All right.
Um, the only other thing to add, we're working with the Veterans Committee, you know, for the Veterans Park, and they're putting together flyers that they're gonna have volunteers put on all the door handles in town, just to see if folks are interested in contributing to the park, so, I've got some samples here, but if you get calls, because since we're a city that doesn't take on solicitors, this is only what they call a lit drop, and they'll put it on the door.
Yeah, we're not gonna try and make contact.
No, no, if someone wants to talk to them about it, that's fine, but it's just.
But it'll be our local guys.
Yeah, yeah. So I know the school district is helping with some kids' classes, Superintendent Tony and, and, um, then the vets committee is working on, uh, folks helping out too. I think like the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts are gonna be helping, so, just to make you aware of it.
Good, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, you're right, sorry.
All right, no questions, we'll go on to Finance Director Carla.
Um, just a reminder to the finance committee that, um, before next meeting on Tuesday, the 27th, we have a 5 o'clock meeting to review the audit, and then they will be here in May to present the audit to the full council.
Any questions for Carla? About anything? All right. Thank you, Carla. Uh, Public Works Director Sean is not here, but his report is in your packet. Any questions, I'm sure Bill can answer them.
Yep, basically with the weather, they've started full all-out cleaning streets and, uh, so hopefully cleaned up and opened up.
And the brush stop sets going while.
Sean feels it has, so actually reported back that there has been less, less, um, items, so we'll hope that continues.
Have you been contacted by any commercial hollers or not?
I've fielded a few calls myself personally, but I've sent them to Sean, and Sean said he received all the calls, I sent his word.
Yeah, so so far from all. Heard, it sounds like it's, okay, that's fair.
Commercial guys?
Feedback.
I heard a grumbling from them, they just wanted to know what you did and stuff like that.
Just curious.
All right, that'll take us to city engineer Jenna?
Well, as Bill said, this project started up, um, so that's gonna be ongoing, and, um, we did have a neighborhood meeting last week, um, open house, um, and had a few people show up, but.
Wasn't a real big turnout, was it?
It wasn't a huge turnout, so if people still need the information, they can get it here from city hall, um, but otherwise, Elkar is very excited to get going early, so.
All right, any questions for city engineer, about anything? Thank you, Jenna. No library director, that'll take us to fire chief Vance, you got a report?
Yeah, just, not a lot this month, uh, relatively slow month, we had two fire calls, 32 medicals, uh, seven lift assists, so we're seeing that kind of one-up a little bit, where some of our LLA population really are hurt, but they just need some assistance to get up, assistance getting up, uh, we do evaluate them when we show up, uh, for that. We did have an issue with the ladder truck, uh, the control board that, with that bucket, as you, obviously as you move the aerial up and down, you will have a control board to keep that bucket level, uh, is that, uh, the bucket wouldn't go straight up and throw everybody out of the bucket, something like that. Control board went bored, uh, went bad, uh, they sent us a owner board for a little while, and they're sending us a new board, so, and then the team right now is working with, uh, the company to see if it's under warranty, 'cause we had a one-year warranty on it, so I don't have a response back on that yet or not, so, more information to come out, uh, come on that, the truck was always operational, just had to manually, uh, move the bucket a little bit, so ended up seeing some of our people wanting to do that manual. All right, everything's going good, the apparatus made, still looking at engine one replacement, kinda working on some specifications for that, uh, and then really the only other thing I've got is, Air Bay obviously has heard about the, the near drowning, uh, last week, uh, for lack of a better term, all the entities, uh, and the public that was involved went phenomenal, uh, everything that could've gone right went right, uh, so luckily, the last thing I heard, the individual's doing well, uh, hopefully still recovering well, but everything from our laypeople that did CPR, uh, we had two lay nurses that did CPR, to Homestead County sheriffs, uh, getting a landing zone for mail one, blocking traffic so the ambulance can get the medical, uh, facility really quick, to first responders, uh, everything just worked out really well, so, uh, it seems like that's gonna be, right now, I would say it's gonna be a positive outcome, so. That's it.
Any questions for chief? All right, thank you, Vance. Taking on the committee commission board reports, chamber of commerce, nothing in the packet tonight, I suppose they're getting their heads together for Summerfest. EDA HRA, Al, do you have something?
Yeah, uh, next thing we have is the senior honor banquet, we're gonna have the amphitheater on May 12th, so we're gonna try to do something outside. It's a large class, 143, so a lot of businesses have to step up, take a couple seniors.
We, I think we got it. All right, do you have anything else to add, Al?
Nope.
Thank you. EDA HRA, we meet two weeks.
Next week now.
Finance?
We meet two weeks.
Library?
Nothing.
Park board?
All right, we need to donate.
Personnel? Planning zoning, Josh?
How we met last week, and do the things, and, uh, and then we meet next month.
You'd meet next month again, okay. Good, if you start taking off one of them.
He's not busy.
Public safety? Jason?
I'm mad.
Nothing? Everything's safe?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Everything you said is right.
The sheriffs, I mean, one thing I will say about Sheriff's Department, they went above and beyond to get the intersections blocked, so the ambulance can get out. It's not a standard thing we do, but. They, they knocked out a park, hearing on the radio what they were doing and stuff like that, it, everything helps, I mean, everybody did a great job, so.
We all thank you, I mean, you did a commendable job, finally thanks you, and send our best out to everybody too.
I think everybody knows it's a grandson of, uh.
Even the day before, you guys set up for that medical in the trailer park that never ended up getting used, but.
Yeah.
Man, two days in a row, my phones were blowing up, like, what's going on, Dr. Musso, what's going on? Helicopters coming, they're coming everywhere! Was it a stabbing, a shooting? I'm like, I don't know, man.
Yeah, I will, I give the Sheriff's Department a great thing, in Homestead County, Sheriff's Department does a great job landing the helicopter for us, we get south, I think it's Power County or Fillmore, but they, they just don't have as many staff members, so, it's very comforting for us when we're here, the helicopters coming in, we know 99.9% of the time, they've got the helicopter landing for us, taking care of, so it's a great relationship, it works really well, so.
Yeah, even on the radio traffic, both days I listen to it, and it's crazy, 'cause there's stuff, there's no, there's no direction given, it's like, I got it, I'll take the landing zone, and they're on it, and then transfer over and pass you.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's just, you're very fortunate, most.
Thank you, all. Works? Granny?
No report.
Roll call.
Uh, that got canceled or postponed, so no report.
Roll call did?
The monthly meeting.
Stu 180?
Take a Florida report, please.
What, you said Florida report?
Yep.
It was cold.
It was cold.
It was like 65.
Oh, no! It's certainly warmer temperatures than I would have said.
Transit v. Community. Communications tonight, we have a communication from People's Co-op Drive about the electric car, they're gonna be coming, they're gonna be touring around the country and that coming through town here. So read about it in your packet there. Takes the old mic, city council welcomes and encourages participation with community members, please keep in mind that comments must be bourbon and city business, they must adhere to that as far as rules. No employee's name may be used, please do not expect action from the council this evening, you're bearing your concerns. We'd also request you, comments will live in four minutes, speakers be recognized only once, if this number is asked, anyone who addresses the council, please step up to the podium, state your name and address.
Only one person here.
Well, they don't wanna say anything. I'll take a sort of final.
I'm not, I ain't gonna shoot a jerk.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.